Yes. Okay. All right. I'm hearing an echo, so it's in our...
I think it's the echoes coming from Javon's device. Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Good evening all, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of April the 13th, 2021. I'd like to welcome everyone for being here, and let's have a roll call, please. City Clerk.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. And kindly, Councilmember Salazar will lead us in the pledge this evening, please.
Okay. I'll spin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar, and now we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments for items that are not listed on the agenda this evening. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to its law. And if you wish, if you could raise your virtual hand at this time. And I don't think we have any phone folks on the phone. They're all via Zoom or others. So right now I have two folks that have raised their hands for items not on the agenda, and I'll turn it over to the City Clerk to please bring them in.
Paula Pinsky?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I recently watched on the news there were reports of mountain light sightings in San Bruno. I was wondering if the city is going to post any safety information regarding that, specifically not on Facebook or Twitter for those of us who don't use social media. The second thing is I read that Mowbray signed an agreement with BART to turn over some land for them to build apartments in a shopping area, and that's going to affect the high-speed rail. It's going to have to go underground, and I'm wondering if the city in the future could brief us on what effect that's going to have on San Bruno and will there be digging and construction for the high-speed rail that's going to go through? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Vanessa Melendrez.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm members of community. My name is Vanessa Melendrez, and I use she/her pronouns. I am a proud resident of San Bruno as well as a member of the Peninsula DSA. So I come here today because I believe it's vital that the San Bruno, the city of San Bruno passes a resolution in support of the universal healthcare bill that's in the state assembly right now, also referred to AP 1400, the California Guaranteed Healthcare for All Act, also known as Calcare, as well as the Medicare for All Act of 2021 introduced by Congresswoman Japal in the House of Representatives. So as you guys know, Americans pay more for healthcare than any other country in the world, yet our health outcomes are among the worst for rich countries. And with the COVID-19 pandemic that everyone's, I'm sure, fully aware of, it has shed some really harsh light on the inequities for the, of the for-profit American healthcare system as well as showing how vital universal healthcare is right now. So rather than trying, rather than tying insurance to jobs and skyrocketing fees, we need a system that puts patients over profits. Even in our community today, there are people who can't afford care, including folks like Kristia Fiddler, whose niece was recently diagnosed with, I might butcher this, ribronial cranositis. And then these are actually stories I got, me and my members got from San Bruno GoFundMe accounts for medical expenses. So these are San Bruno residents as well, showing that's really a local issue. They had to turn to GoFundMe to raise 15K for a life-saving surgery, and so far the family hasn't even gone halfway to their goal. There's countless other stories I found online. If you guys would like me to share, feel free to reach out to Peninsula DSA. And our neighbors shouldn't have to rely on crowdsourcing for care. Even the CEO of GoFundMe says crowdfunding platform cannot and should not be solution to complex systematic problems that must be solved with meaningful public policy. Under a universal single payer healthcare program, everyone will be covered for dental, vision, hearing, mental, pharmaceuticals, and more with no copays, fees, deductibles, or premiums, all free at the point of service. No one will be denied care, forced to use emergency room because of a doctor or coverage will, and no one will be forced to go into poverty due to the healthcare cases. Besides bringing down healthcare costs for families, experts predict that single payer Medicare for all would save the nation more than $600 billion annually by slashing administrative waste of commercial insurance, including paperwork and other burdens that insurers impose on hospitals and doctors. In addition to more than $100 billion would be saved by negotiating drug prices with manufacturers. As Congresswoman Deneau said, as part of the introduction bill, in the wealthiest nation on earth, patients should not be launching GoFundMe to afford healthcare. In total, I'll wrap up by saying this bill is only a, it's a structure. Funding has not been figured out yet, but it's a good step forward, and I believe we should go through and write a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. City Clerk, I'm seeing no other hands up at this time. Is that in concurrence?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments this evening, and we will move on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The first item will be with Jennifer Deanos, and that is receive update on COVID-19 responses and efforts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, and members of the public that are with us tonight. I'm just pulling up the presentation here, so you should be able to see it in full screen. My name is Jennifer Deanos. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here to give you an update on COVID-19. Tonight, I will go through the blueprint for a safer economy. I'll provide snapshot of our COVID-19 statistics for San Bruno and San Mateo County. I'll provide an update on city services, and specifically with the library reopening with modifications. And lastly, a reminder to stay connected with us. I'll start with the blueprint for a safer economy. Each Tuesday, the state announces the county metrics. And so earlier today, the state updated our metrics. We have no change to our status. We're remaining in the moderate category of the orange tier here. The county metrics that are listed here on the screen are just shy of meeting that next less restrictive tier, the yellow or the minimal category. We are going to stay in this orange category for now. With vaccination rates increasing and test positivity rates nearing a record low, the California Department of Public Health did announce updates to the blueprint for a safer economy beginning April 15th. There are changes to allowances, and that includes outdoor gatherings with modifications. And I took a snapshot here just to show you the capacity changes for outdoor gatherings. In the red tier, it's up to 25 people. In the orange tier, which is where we are, as a county, it's up to 50 people. The yellow tier is up to 100 people. There are also changes to private events, meetings with modifications, and indoor live events with modifications and limited to in-state visitors. So all of these are listed in the source reference that's up here in the orange header of the presentation itself, but that's covid19.ca.gov/safereconomy. Governor Newsom also announced an update to our reopening plan, and that's beginning June 15th, California will fully reopen if two criteria are met, and that's if the vaccine supply is sufficient for Californians 16 years and older and wish to be vaccinated have sufficient supply, and sufficient is defined as two weeks, and that's if hospitalization rates are stable and low. Moving on to county statistics, I have a summary table here of the dashboard that is available all through smchhealth.org. The vaccination totals have continued to increase, and here you can see on the screen, San Bruno, 56 of our population 16 years and older have been vaccinated, and that's just a smidge over the county-wide percentage of 55.8%. The completion of the whole vaccination series, that data is not available for San Bruno, but countywide, 65.4% have been fully vaccinated of the 55.8% that you see there that have started the series. Vaccination by health equity quartile, health equity quartile is disadvantaged neighborhoods. San Bruno is about 48.2%, and that's slightly above the countywide average of 44.8%. So we're in good shape there. Our historical COVID-19 cases, citywide for the city of San Bruno, there have been 2,289 cases and a total of 40,910 cases countywide. And in the last, excuse me, the last 30 days, there have been 77 new cases in San Bruno and 1,556 countywide. Total deaths, the breakdown by jurisdiction is not provided by the county, but there have been a total of 556 deaths. And as a reminder, now is no big time than now. Make sure to keep your distance, wear your mask, and wash your hands frequently to avoid spreading COVID-19. Moving on to the vaccine and testing, when you eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine, beginning April 15th, all Californians over the age of 16 are eligible. So in the past, on social media and on our website, we have consistently promoted myturn.ca.gov as well as smchhealth.org/covidvaccine. The phone numbers are also on the screen, but both of these tools not only notify you when you're eligible, but they also provide an opportunity to book an appointment to get that vaccination. Vaccine supply does remain limited, and that includes the announcement from earlier today with the CDC and FDA citing concerns about the Janssen or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And the county issued a release earlier today pausing the county efforts with the use of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And all of the events that have been scheduled and appointments that have been scheduled will be honored. The county was able to shift the Johnson &amp; Johnson over to Pfizer or Moderna, so all of those appointments will be honored as of this time. However, other programs like mobile vaccination and other outreach programs will have to be reviewed before proceeding. Although vaccination continues, testing does remain a critical way to keep you, your family, and our community safe, and we've also promoted this on social media very often and on our website, but San Bruno has partnered with San Mateo County to offer no-cost COVID-19 testing to our residents and to anyone that works in our county. Those two locations are 530 Huntington, that's offered on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and at 975 Snee Lane, that's Tuesday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the bottom website reference here, smchgov.org/testing, if you happen to not be in San Bruno and still want to get tested. There are many other locations throughout the county that also offer free testing, and appointments are always preferred but not required. Moving on to city services, and I'm going to focus on the San Bruno Library. So as you know, several of our facilities were closed at the beginning of the pandemic, including the San Bruno Library. It closed as of March 14th, 2020, and launched the curbside pickup in May of 2020. So it was closed for just about two months. Since launching curbside pickup, there have been over 72,000, 72,000 items were checked out, and nearly 8,000 appointments were filled. So that's a lot of activity for the library. And I'm happy to provide this information to you, but beginning April 19th, the library will reopen with modifications. Those modifications are 25% capacity. There are wellness and temperature check requirements upon entry, and there will be special hours. So the special hours are in blocks of time, and this is really in an effort to allow for time for cleaning in between visits that come to the library. And so from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there will be a browse-and-go opportunity. Two to three, there's a curbside pickup. Four to six, there's a browse-and-go opportunity again. So two browse-and-go opportunities throughout the day. And what does browse-and-go service mean? It's browsing, of course, checking out and returning material, whole pickups, use of public computers for a limited time, computer printouts, you can get a new library card, simple reference questions. And it's really the services that do not require close contact, and that's for the safety of our employees and of our patrons. There are no change to parks. What you see here has been available for quite some time and has previously been recorded. Everything that's here on the open side remains open, but I will highlight the closed, picnic sites remain closed, drinking fountains remain closed, and indoor recreation facilities remain closed. Our EOC and department directors continually evaluate services as our status changes. We ensure compliance with guidance as they're issued, and I mentioned, excuse me, I mentioned this last time, but in terms of next steps and summer programs, which is important to a lot of our community families, the activity guide will be released at the end of this month, and it will include summer camp and program offerings. And so there have been a couple of teasers, one or two that have been posted on social media, but that will be officially available at the end of this month. And as a reminder, please stay connected. SMCLR is our emergency notification system. Social media, we provide updates, so stay connected. If you're not signed up, please sign up. That concludes my presentation this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your presentation. If you could stop sharing the screen, and then as my colleagues may start to raise their hand, just on the library, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but my understanding is the Angus side for the entrance will be the only available entry, like in City Hall, it's on Linden. This is Angus. And I, you know, you know, the library personnel and staff are excited and preparing, but also just be patient because there are some modifications, as was described. All the computers will not be accessible at one time because of the social distancing, or if you're used to going in, maybe reading the paper and sitting there and reading it for an hour, so that may not be available at this time. So understand it's exciting to see that go forward, but just understand the staff decided to see the patrons, but just be patient because things obviously are modified for everyone's sake. With that, Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for the presentation and for the updates on both the camps from, that were requested from last month and also the update on the library. I just wanted to ask about two things. One is vaccination pop-up coming to San Bruno. I know I've spoken with the supervisor a couple of times about this, and it seemed like we were getting close, and then it went to another city. So I'm curious to know, are we taking any opportunities to try to get a pop-up vaccination site in San Bruno, because we are one of the cities that has not had any yet? And then the second is just a thank you to all of the staff that were involved in the Easter Bunny home visits. I saw a number of pictures all over social media, and it just looked like an amazing event for the kids who got a visit from the Easter Bunny. So thank you for whoever thought of it and whoever worked on that. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Oh, wait, she didn't answer the question. Sorry.
Hi, I apologize. I apologize. Let's Rico pause. Let's turn it over to staff.
Sure. So in terms of a mobile vaccination site, nothing has officially been scheduled or announced for the city of San Bruno, but as soon as information is available, that will be shared with the community. Right now, those mobile sites are really focused on the health quartile and have been in other close by neighborhoods. I know there's been one in South City, in East Palo Alto, in Ruffel Oaks, and so I think there's a focus in those specific neighborhoods, but as soon as we have more information, we will report back.
Yeah, and we're not the only city that has not, is not receiving one, and you're correct as far as trying to hit pockets that they feel are the need greatest at this moment. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, I want to share concern about how our picnic tables at City Park are kind of being used and what's our, what's our view on that? It is outside. If families are gathering, that's okay, but it seems like more and more people are taking it easier there at picnic tables, and I just wanted to hear what we should be doing there.
I'll pause. City staff, please.
So I can take that back to our EOC team. Currently, there is signage that is available throughout the park, and it should be placed on the picnic table itself, showing closure is in accordance with the guidance that has been issued, but I would have to find out more to see if any changes can be made to that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mason?
All right. Thank you, just one follow-up question to the vaccination question. So can, what can our city be doing to advocate for our site? So I do understand that there's like a method to this, but I also have seen some advocacy around cities, and so I'm wondering how can we advocate better? How can, does administration need direction from us? What can we do to advocate for our city to get a site?
City Manager, did you want to chime in?
Sure. I'll take that. Thank you, Councilmember Mason, for that. Know that we have been in communication with the county EOC as well as administration at the county, and they do know our desire for a vaccination site here. As Jennifer Deanos mentioned, currently, the vaccination sites have been focused on health decisions on communities and parts of our county that are seeing some of the greatest positivity with COVID-19, and so that is the reason why the public has not seen a vaccination site here. With the limited amount of vaccines that are available, they are being prioritized based on health decisions. And so I would say that the county absolutely knows that we and everybody else wants a vaccination clinic, and we have heard from the county that as soon as they are able to ramp up their vaccination program, they look to either, one, extend it to cities like us, or return to their mass vaccination clinics. The council may remember that the county actually transitioned away from the mass vaccination clinics and went to these smaller, more tailored sites, frankly, based on the availability of the vaccine. And so these things are being actively managed, and so I think we, everyone knows.
And I appreciate staff's continued efforts as well as the council's drive, because obviously at Skyline College, we have second harvest food distribution on Huntington, which staff maintains, as well as on Snee, there are testing sites, which those aren't here before. So it's thanks to everybody's work in keeping the county aware of our interests. So thank you, the staff. With no other hands up, thank you, Jennifer, once again, for your presentation and your update. Now we'll move on under announcements still, under item B, announcement. The Spring Community Cleanup Event on Saturday, May 1st, 2021, will be held from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. The event is located at 975 Snee Lane, and residents, San Bruno residents, may drop off latex paint, bulky items, e-waste appliances, and bags of garbage. Residents are prohibited from dropping off dirt, rocks, or concrete. This is an event open to San Bruno residents only, and participants will be asked to show identification showing San Bruno residency. COVID-19 guidelines will be enforced, including the requirements of mask wearing. This event is sponsored by Recology and the City of San Bruno, which was a similar event which was held in the City Hall parking lot on October 17th. So again, that is open. Understand that for the residents that wish to come by, they will be asked to unload their vehicles in the appropriate sections for those disposable items. We want to thank staff and Recology for working on this project along with Councilmember Salazar and I, as well as obviously the church at 975 Snee Lane, who has been very helpful to this community for this and other things. Moving on to item C, announced that the, there will be, it's not impossible, there will be a nine-week closure of the BART garage due to retrofitting and upgrades to the lighting system. The garage will be done in phases. The garage in itself and entirety will not be closed. It will be done in phases, beginning with floors three, five, and that begins on April the 26th. So just wanted folks to be aware of that. With that, we will move on to consent. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Are there any members of the council that wish to have an item withdrawn for separate action by council? Not seeing any. Is there any items that council would like to have a comment or question on? Councilmember Mason?
Just a quick comment, E.
Anything else? Okay. With that said, I'm going to go to item E, so we can get the comment. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the county of San Mateo for the award of an environmental agency grant in the amount of $200,000. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank staff because this has been a request for, you know, to make sure that the public is aware of all these opportunities for grants and when the city is participating or taking advantage or applying for them. So this is one of our strategic initiatives, and I just want to point that out and thank staff for including this in tonight's agenda and doing the work around it. Thank you so much.
Any other comments on this item? And if I'm not mistaken, and I know it's government, right? So things don't move as fast as we'd hope, but if my memory is correct or whatever, this is a request that the city has done back in 2018 or 2019, and so it's come to fruition. So we appreciate that. Obviously, sometimes they take time, but it is here. If there's no other questions or comments on that item, I will look for action from council to the consent items A through E.
I move, we approve the consent calendar?
Well, second.
Motion, Salazar, second, and Hamilton to approve all of consent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, City Clerk. Now we'll move on to item six, conductive business. City Clerk?
Item 6A, adopt a resolution supporting San Bruno businesses that qualified for the San Mateo County Strong Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program and authorizing the appropriation of up to $290,000 from the Emergency Reserve Fund to provide individual business grants up to $10,000.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have with us somebody from San Seda, some may know, and that is Mr. Don Cecil. We're going to turn it over to you, sir, for comments and our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is my audio okay?
Perfect.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to screen share and do a quick presentation. But first, I'd really like to thank City Manager Grogan, Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Medina, Councilmember Salazar, Mason, and Hamilton. You know, you all really have stepped up with this recommendation tonight, and then leaning back in our whole marketing phase to let San Bruno restaurants know about this program. You all said yes when I asked for help. Councilmember Mason picked up a bunch of flyers at City Hall that I dropped off with some staff who were looking at me kind of curiously why I was even there to drop off a packet of flyers. And so it really shows in the response that we have received from San Bruno restaurants. So very quickly here. This idea was originally, came of conversations that we had with the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. They allocated a million dollars for South County. The Board of Supervisors and Mike Caligie's office, Peggy Jensen, quickly wanted to match that million dollars with a million dollars from the county. Plus, we had some other sources that got the county funding up to about $1.3 million. The program objectives were to support restaurants, breweries, and wineries that have suffered from the economic impact of COVID-19, ideally with $10,000 grants. We had an application portal. We had a robust outreach, as robust as can be done in the middle of COVID, and still relying on business owners to upload information to a website. Everything was in four languages, English, Spanish, Chinese, Tagalog. We had email support. We had phone support, and we really tried our best to distribute this information as far and wide as possible. The other thing that we tried to do was to really make this as easy for a business owner as possible. So we were not asking for detailed tax returns. We were simply asking them to fill out a web-based application to determine their eligibility. And that included the name of the restaurant, where it was located, contact information, relationship of the ownership, and then optional information about demographics, just to help us continue to build the profile of who the business owners are in San Mateo County and the help that they've been seeking. So for a restaurant, it was a brick-and-mortar location with a full-service kitchen. So for a restaurant, it was a brick-and-mortar location with a full-service kitchen. For a brewery, it was a type 23 small beer manufacturer. And for a winery, a type 2 wine grower. Ineligibility would have been an incomplete application, failure to meet the eligibility criteria, a corporate-owned franchise, a restaurant operating in a hotel without a separate business license, and then also no pop-ups, no food trucks, no homeless businesses, micro kitchens. And then finally, if a restaurant had received very recent support through the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center's distribution of CAREZAC funding from the county, then, or if they had received over $200,000 in great plates revenue, they were not eligible to participate in this particular program. So for the city of San Bruno, we had a total of 54 applications, which was fantastic. And so when I say thank you to all of you, that number reflects your hard work and commitment to ensuring that your small business owners knew about this program. Of the 54, three were duplicates, 14 were deemed ineligible, and 38 were deemed to likely be eligible based on the pre-application. The county funding through its allocation model allocated nine $10,000 grants, or $90,000, to the city of San Bruno. And so why we're here this evening is we have up to 29 remaining restaurants in San Bruno who, based on their pre-application, appear to be eligible for the funding. And as we have become quite comfortable in doing, we're here to ask for some money. And so, you know, these 29 businesses have survived the pandemic. These business owners are often immigrants themselves, women. They employ immigrants and women. They're often family-owned. And so should the council approve this request? It can often mean the difference between making it and not making it. So I will stop there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Cecil, thank you for your presentation. I want to thank you and Roseanne, and who I know couldn't be here, serving on the San Mateo County Recovery Initiative, the Economic Committee. I've seen all of this action happening and the good that is coming through the county and San Seda and other agencies to be where we are today. It was impressive to me to see from Roseanne getting the email to the city manager and I on how many folks from San Bruno that participated or put in an application, shall we say? And I appreciate that. Two, couple of questions is, how did the program, as people may ask, like, how did it get to be restaurants specific? And then, and I know it's very clear, you can't tell us who the nine are or who the applicants are for obvious reasons, but can you give us a general idea that, you know, throughout our community? Mr. Cecil?
Yeah, sure. So again, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative really came to the table with that first million dollars, and they wanted it specifically for restaurants. And as we talked through the idea, you know, we all sort of came to the conclusion, every business is important, but there is just something special about restaurants. You know, they are where we go on our first dates, where we have the first birthdays of our children, where we have our parents' 50th anniversaries, and all points in between. And, you know, and I'm the proud son of a San Bruno resident myself. My mother loves West Coast Cafe. And when you think to yourself, what would a community be without West Coast Cafe, or all of those small business owners and restaurant owners on San Mateo Avenue, or, you know, the Bun Me Place at Bay Hill? They really are a fabric of our community, and that's how we coalesced around this idea of restaurants, breweries, and wineries. With regards to your second question, we're not able to give you exact names of restaurants at this point. So those that have been selected, when they accept the check, they accept having the name of their restaurant listed, and we just haven't compiled that list yet. For those that haven't been selected or were deemed ineligible, you know, it, these are proud people who have survived, and we don't want to embarrass them by printing the name of their business and saying, well, they weren't eligible. And until they get a check and accept that check, we also don't want to lose that. What I can tell you, though, is the addresses of these restaurants are at Bay Hill, they're on San Mateo Avenue, they're along the El Camino Real, they are all over the city of San Bruno.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarifying answers. And I'm going to bring it to my colleagues first, and then we're going to open it up for public input. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, good seeing you, Mr. Cecil. Thank you for your work on this very important project. My question involves how much feedback was given to those restaurants who were not eligible? Like, was, maybe there, was there a language barrier there? Or just wanted to make sure that people were given an opportunity to kind of fix something that was maybe a minor mistake? So could you shed some light on that?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, everything was, all of our outreach was conducted in those four languages. And anyone who was deemed ineligible received a letter stating that they were ineligible and offered them the opportunity to ask questions about why. And, you know, I'll give you an example. We had a question that we sort of, after the fact, realized might have been awkwardly worded. It was the question about how many, you know, do you own five or more restaurants in San Mateo County? And we realized that we could have asked that question better, because we were getting, you know, we were getting a yes response from folks who just didn't seem like they owned more than five restaurants. And so we went back and did outreach to those people to ask that clarifying question. So, you know, if you, if you completely filled out the application, it was incomplete or you weren't eligible, we didn't offer them the opportunity to go back and sort of fix it, because that was one of the criteria. But in instances where things didn't make sense, or folks had follow-up questions, or in the instance that one question, you know, we did go out, go back and do outreach, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So, thank you, Mr. Cecil, for the presentation and for, for your participation in this program. Through the mayor, my question actually isn't for Mr. Cecil, but it's about the funding of it, of this. So should I ask that question now or wait until a different portion of the discussion?
Thank you very much. If it's okay, why don't we have questions for Mr. Cecil? We'll open it to the public, and then we'll come back to council, and then follow up with staff. Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton, for asking. Councilmember Mason?
Hey, I just will have a comment. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Mr. Cecil for a very quick response. We had received an email, and the email included a flyer. And within 20, less than 24 hours, Mr. Cecil ensured that I had copies in all of the languages necessary to hand out. And councilmember Hamilton joined me, along with residents Stephen Seymour and Sandra Perez-Vargas, to hand-deliver and hand, and really person-to-person speak with every one of the business owners that would qualify, all along San Mateo, El Camino Real, we went to Bay Hill and Tan Fran. And so I'm so glad to see this result, because I really believe that our small business community, especially our restaurants, are really what make our downtown and our city so diverse and so special, because people come for this wide variety of food options. I also just wanted to tell, just a quick story that I thought really touched me, in going place to place, it was clear that a number of our, especially our immigrant owner populations, didn't, either felt that maybe they had received an email that may have been junk mail or may have been spam. So those, the door-to-door really solidified that this was a real opportunity. And so one of the, one of the restaurants I had been to, she had, it was a really beautiful story. They had lived in Europe, and they had lived in Thailand, each one for over 15 years, working at restaurants, moved to the United States, and for over 15 years, both worked at a business. And when COVID happened, they both got laid off. So wife and husband with a son in college. And she continued to tell me how much they had really struggled in paying their rent, and that they had been struggling since COVID. But when her husband came in and talked to us and then walked out, she began to cry. And so we just sat there, she cried, and she said, "I've never spent so much time with my husband." So that they've always worked two jobs, one or two jobs. And she says that as difficult as COVID had been, she literally crying was telling me how grateful she is to have gotten to know her husband again, and how sweet he's been to her since they've worked together. And so their hope is that their restaurant makes it here in San Bruno. They, she went on and on about how they're living this American dream, and that this restaurant gives them this opportunity to pursue this goal even at this age in their life. So I just wanted to really thank you, thank SMC, for all the work that has been done around small business. And I really want to thank our staff for getting the staff report together, because it is so needed in our, with our business community. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, with no more hands from council, I'm going to, we have a, I think it's Paul who'd like to speak, and city clerk, if you can bring him in, please.
Yes, Paul Wapensky?
I was just, just a comment. In the future, if they have programs like this, maybe they could reduce it to like $7,500 instead of $10,000. That way, you could spread it out to more restaurants, more businesses. I know it's, you know, just a thought, but at least more people would be able to get some money and hopefully stay in business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Not seeing any, anybody else from the public. We'll bring it back to council, and let's go right to councilmember Hamilton, which was going to be asking staff question on expenditure.
Right, so regarding the appropriating the $290,000 from the Emergency Reserve Fund for this, I'm absolutely in favor of appropriating the money. But I would, I would like to entertain for my colleagues, slightly amending the resolution to direct that the $290,000 that we take from the Emergency Reserve Fund now, to pay for this now, be replenished from the ARA funding once that funding is distributed. Because that's, that's the, one of the main purposes of that ARA funding, would be for a program like this.
And it's an excellent question, and thank you, because I think the city manager, as we were talking about this topic coming on the agenda, I was trying to understand, and I know there's, you can fund it here, fund it there, and so I don't know if it's specifically, but there's other ways that the city manager explained to me on how we can. So, city manager, you will articulate it much better than I could.
Sure. Javon Grogan, city manager. Absolutely. It's talked about in the staff report that we anticipate this $290,000 to be reimbursed by the American Rescue Act, the ARA funds. And so the city council, I, we have a study session scheduled for May where we will talk about all of the potential allocations of the ARA monies, and I do not see a problem with adding that language to the resolution that is before you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Appreciate it. And I think people would want to know that, too, that it's not coming out of the general fund or the reserves, that it's monies that we're receiving from Washington through that $1.9 trillion that they allocated to, for various things in the county. I'm just going to say, you know, I, a lot of our communities and neighbors are also doing what they can to assist small businesses, and we have done that through the community foundation and grants that could be open to anyone. And so they have issued those as well, that were open not just to this, but to all businesses. So this is another opportunity, and speaking to, just last week evening, a business owner, you know, how tough it's been, really has been tough, where they just had to close the place down because it just wasn't viable, keep it open and keep staff, even with to-go. And little things like this may not seem like a lot to some in these times of what it costs for this or that, but really, it could be, it really can be. And sitting on this committee to hear the stories and what have you of what that can do, just to get them over the line, to get them as we start to reopen even further, I think this is something the city can do and we should do, and there will be a time that we will all celebrate together, maybe still with masks, but we can be together. So other comments or thoughts or questions from my colleagues? If not, then I will say that this is a resolution, and do we have action by council?
Motion to approve.
A motion made to introduce the resolution. Is there a second?
Second. To the chair?
I'm sorry, councilmember Salazar.
I just wanted to clarify that the motion will be with councilmember Hamilton's provision that it be replenished.
See, councilmember Hamilton, somebody has not forgotten you. Is that okay with the motion maker and the second arm for that amendment into the resolution for clarification of where the funds will be allocated?
Yes, that's amended with councilmembers, councilmember Mason, and councilmember, councilmember Hamilton's amendment.
And then there's a thumbs up from Vice Mayor Medina. So with that said, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Want to thank you, Mr. Cecil. Oh, I see you're showing the card. I want to thank you, Mr. Cecil, for your, your help and your time and your presentation, and we wish you the very best in your future. Stay healthy, stay strong, and we look forward to seeing you in person real soon. And, and thank you for being here. And, okay, just as a credit, as we were looking it up, you know, the San Bruno Foundation has probably given a little over $400,000 in grants, so they also have done their part. So I think this was a great step for the city, and appreciate everybody's efforts. With that said, let's move on to item B. City clerk?
Item 6B, consider re-adopting urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants directly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic.
City attorney?
Hello?
Hello?
Let me get my slides queued up here. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Well, that's great. You know, by the time the pandemic is over, we'll all figure out how to actually do this. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council and members of the public, we're here to talk about readoption of the Cease Commercial Eviction Urgency Ordinance. So we have a short PowerPoint presentation to remind everybody of where this started and where we are right now, and finally, progressing toward a decision about whether you all would like to have it readopted and thereby extended. So let's take a quick look at our agenda for tonight. We're going to look at some background, remember the policy rationales for why this was adopted in the first place. We have a survey of other local agencies, which is new. We have a sort of repeat of a legal basis for the ordinance, a brief review of the ordinance provisions, and then next steps. So let's take a look at where, where we were, in case anybody needs any reminding. So in March 16, there was a shelter-in-place order and emergency proclamations. We all remember that very well. And then there was a state order which authorized local jurisdictions to adopt residential and commercial moratoria on evictions. So just a week after that, the county adopted a moratorium on residential evictions, covered the entire county, and that ordinance was in effect until, is in effect until June of this year. In April, the county adopted a moratorium on commercial evictions as opposed to residential evictions, but it covered only the unincorporated areas. And then at the end of May, the county moratorium on those evictions expired. At the end of April, the city council provided the staff with direction to draft an ordinance for the sea. And on May 12th of last year, the city initially adopted that ordinance. So then ensued a variety of readoptions and extensions. So it was readopted through July 28th of last year. Then it was extended to September 30th of last year. Then in October, it was readopted through March 31st, 2021 of this year, so just the end of last month. So under that ordinance, which has expired at the end of March, commercial tenants still have 180 days after that. have a hundred-and-eighty days after that to pay all of the rent due if it was withheld or unable to be paid for COVID-related reasons. So that means that if you were one of those tenants, subject to the protection of the ordinance, that expired in March, you still have until September of this year to pay your rent. So the bottom line is that the city of San Bruno's commercial eviction moratorium has been in effect continuously since initial adoption with no gaps in coverage. And that was achieved both by extension and by re-adoption, retroactive back to the day that the prior ordinance expired. Now, you may know that the governor recently, again, extended local authority for these moratoria through June thirty of this year. So the policy rationales are, are not new. We talked about this the, the last time, so we were back at the, we were at the city council. So we won't spend a lot of time on these, but obviously this has been a severe unprecedented dislocation. There's a public interest in small businesses remaining open, and many of those businesses are, are essential to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. However, there were a couple of other considerations that the city council had previously considered about the ordinance, and maybe some new ones that have appeared now. So we did tell the city council, there, there is a more equal bargaining position between commercial landlords and tenants than residential ones. And the city council also understand that some landlords might themselves qualify as small businesses. So in other words, tenants aren't the only small businesses. However, we do now see that there are some previously successful small businesses that are reopening as the economy reopens, hopefully. Eviction cases are still delayed in court, to some degree, perhaps not as much as they were before, but many of the civil actions that I'm familiar with are, are delayed by, by months, and eviction cases, I think, are, are in that category as well. The other thing is, we don't really have any data and no obvious way to gather any data regarding the effect that the ordinance has had in San Bruno. And then finally, as you heard in the prior agenda item, and of course, have been following both in the news media and your positions as council members, there, there are now assistance programs for both landlords and tenants at most every level of government. So these are some other policy things to consider as you're deciding whether to re-adopt the ordinance. So we did do a survey of other local agencies, and these are local agencies that are in the county of San Mateo. And what we find is that the, the city of San Bruno, and is currently now extending it to June of twenty-twenty-one, the city of Milbrae is, they, they are tracking state law, so they're extending it till June of twenty-twenty-one. But, but that's it. Every, everybody else who had an ordinance, and there were only, what, one, two, three of them, those ordinances have expired, and nobody else actually even adopted one of these ordinances in the first place. So what this chart indicates is that we're, we would be one of the few agencies to be not only adopting, or re-adopting, but extending essentially the commercial, excuse me, the commercial eviction ordinance. So briefly, we did tell the city council at the last meeting that where this came up, what is the legal basis for the ordinance? It's provided by the government code. It does require factual findings that are included in the ordinance, and the courts will generally defer to that. And as you may remember, the ordinance does require a four-fifths vote of the city council because it's an urgency ordinance. Let's just take a, a quick review of the ordinance provisions. These are the same as on all of the, the prior adoptions, readoptions, and extensions. So it, it would prohibit commercial evictions if you had less than five million in annual gross receipts, that's prorated. It would be effective until the end of June, as indicated. And the key point here is that would apply to all unexpired notices of eviction. So that means that if somebody got a notice of eviction on April first, for example, this ordinance, after the last ordinance expired, this ordinance would, would cover that. So there would be no gap in coverage if the city council decides to adopt this. Requires the landlords to notify the tenant of the ordinance, submit documentation of inability to pay, and then the tenant can defer paying rent for ninety days plus three additional twenty-day periods. So right now, that's September twenty-twenty-one. If this ordinance is adopted and it's extended to June twenty-twenty-one, then that ninety days plus three thirty-day periods would essentially end at the end of this calendar year, so December of twenty-twenty-one. prohibits late fees, it does allow landlords to request a hardship waiver, and by the way, just, just on that, you know, the city has not received any, any requests for any hardship waiver as allowed by the ordinance. The only communication that the city has had with, with anybody about this ordinance in the last year has been, we've received, I think, maybe two or three at the most requests for copies of the ordinance by, by somebody, we don't know whether they're a landlord or a tenant, and we provided that ordinance, it's, it's actually now up on the, on the website. And then, as we know before, the enforcement is primarily by parties and not the city. So here we are this evening, the city council could certainly consider extending, I really mean to say re-adopting it, if it's further authorized by the state, and it is now further authorized by the state, if you would like to extend it. So the next steps really for tonight are, I'd be happy to answer any questions, we should obtain public input if any. You can discuss whether or not you would like to re-adopt it, and if you decide to do so, that would be by a four-fifths vote, and it would go into effect immediately and relate back to the end of the expiration of the last ordinance was, which was March thirty-first. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney, for the presentation, and, there we go, bring us back. I'm going to open it to public, so if anybody from the public would like to speak on this, if you could start to raise your virtual hands. Just a reminder to the public as well as the council, the reason we have this and each municipality does is, long ago, when the, the mayors met on the county call, the county was willing to do rent for homeowners, or, or folks renting as a county, but they would not do it for small business commercial. They did not want to intercede into each of that for a variety of reasons we don't need to get into, but that's why each municipality adds, has to deal with it on their own. Not seeing any hands raised from those in the audience. We will bring it to council for questions, discussion. City council. Never seen you guys so, so shy. Anyone? Okay. Thank you, council, for starting us off.
Yeah, I would just say that with this round that we just approved a couple minutes ago, I think that's going to help, clearly from Mr. Cecil's presentation, there are a number of organizations that have not received any funding. So I think this is, this new kind of amount of money that is going to go into our small business community may make a difference, and may be able to pay back some arrears that some of these businesses have. And the state, I believe, just announced the sixth round of small business assistance, and that may also assist. So I think that we should align ourselves with the state in this case, just to make sure we are preserving our small business community here in San Bruno, which is, I mean, honestly, so much of our downtown, to all of our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
Mark, my question is around just potential legal risk of doing something like this. So we have the state saying we can do it, so I imagine that gives us some level of protection if someone were to say, you're, you're affecting my ability to, to do business. But on the other hand, if no other cities have, have taken, a few, a few cities took the action, and no cities are renewing the action, it, it would indicate to me either that there is very small need to do this, or that there's perhaps some compelling reason to not go into that. So can you speak a little bit about, you know, potential risk that we might be putting ourselves in by, by extending it?
City Attorney. City Attorney.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Salazar. Yeah, that's actually a difficult question to answer, primarily because we, we don't have any data one way or the other about whether the, the ordinance is being utilized or not, and what landlords or tenants think about it. So it's very hard to evaluate that risk, and, and I guess the only thing we can really say in general is that the fact that if the city of San Bruno were to re-adopt it and be one of the, the two agencies that would extend it out to the end of June, well, there's, there's two agencies doing it and not, a lot of other agencies, a lot of other agencies that are not doing it. So it, it may make the city a more, a slightly more attractive target than if everybody were doing it. As far as the, the state authority is concerned, yes, it does give some legal cover, but it's not absolute. And I think the cities that are being currently sued over their eviction moratoria are cities that have both residential and commercial eviction moratoria, and that have had many, many, you know, much more stringent provisions, for example, for residential moratoria. And so it, it's just, that's a hard question to answer, Councilmember Salazar. There is some risk, of course, in, in taking any action, there is additional risk in taking this action, but it's, it's very difficult to evaluate because we just don't have any data.
And, thank you, Council. And, and as in addition, if it were to expire, it doesn't expire right at that date, just as if it goes to June, June, it goes really to December. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So right now, the current ordinance, if, if you, if you weren't able to pay as of the end of March, under the current ordinance, even if the city council does nothing this evening, you would have other six months after that, so until September to pay. If the city council decides to adopt the ordinance, then you would have until the end of the year, December, to pay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the city attorney for the, for the, the presentation is very clear. And I, I just wanted to say I'm supportive of this. It, it makes sense to align with the state guidelines and to align all of the, the, align the deadlines, and I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Seeing none at this time. Again, this is an urgency ordinance for it to be re-adopted. As a reminder, it takes a four-fifths vote in order for it to be enacted. Again, is there any action by council?
I'll make a motion to adopt an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent by small business commercial tenants directly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic.
No second.
There's a motion seconded, Hamilton, Mason. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Attorney. Now we're going to move on to comment, comments from council members. First, we have Councilmember Mason. It's a thank you to the city team for releasing a statement that San Bruno stands with the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community, united against hate. And then, obviously, anything else that you want to offer us this evening in a day. Councilmember Mason.
So, thank you, Mayor Medina. I just wanted to thank the, the city team. I was really pleasantly, I don't want to say surprised, I don't think it was a surprise that you guys gone this initiative, but I was really happy to see the statement that the city of San Bruno came out with, stating that they, as a team, really stand behind the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community, which makes up so much of our San Bruno community, and how it was aligned with the United Against Hate campaign. So from me, I just wanted to say thank you, and really put it on our agenda to solidify that this occurred and that I'm grateful for it, and I have shared it with as many people as I can. So thank you so much.
Did you have any other remarks or comments for this evening?
No, no, I mentioned, I actually should have waited for the Easter Bunny part, but then I thought, since it, since it's COVID, whoever dressed up as the Easter Bunny and took the Easter Bunny around, really kind of put themselves in there, in some kind of, at some kind of risk. So I thought I'd throw it in the COVID part, but thank you.
You're welcome. And I guess the Easter Bunny had more than just a mask on, in some ways. So, okay, so well, the next one is item B for myself, consider resolution condemning violence especially against the Asian community. Reason this came up is, last month, Councilmember Salazar and I attended a Zoom meeting with the attorney and the sheriff of San Mateo County, with the San Mateo County API group, to listen and dive into this and to hear from perspectives and what's happening, as well as I met with the general consul and the deputy general consul of Japan, they're located in San Francisco, had a conversation with them, and this is a topic that we discussed as well. And, and as we all know, I think at the time, I, I can certainly say we proclaim that we stand against hate and this and that, but that comes from me, council wishes that it comes from just the mayor at this time. And so I always find it important to solidify, and the resolution is the only mechanism that I'm aware to do it, I can't do my proclamation for all of us, but I think, you know, it's that we, we condemn the, we condemn the increasing number of hate crimes against the Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, including harassment, bullying, and violent acts. And, and that's just a segment of it, and it, it's easy enough for staff to come back with something for us, but that's what I've placing it out to my colleagues to see if they would wish that to come back in a resolution. Councilmember Hamilton.
I would be supportive of, of us adopting a resolution for this, and would vote yes on it if we did so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Medina?
No problem. Yes, I'm also in support of this, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, thank you for, first of all, thanks for bringing this to the council. In reviewing this item, I also reviewed the item that was brought up last year, a similar resolution in which we ended up creating a subcommittee, and when Michael Salazar is the chair, and I'm currently the vice chair, and I think one of the requests had, that had recently been brought to the council, was any suggested topics for that subcommittee to handle. And so in reviewing that meeting, where in fact, the council, a majority of the council did not support the resolution supporting the, supporting, I guess, the, I actually had the title in front of me, and I just can't find it right now.
Sure.
But we had a, a resolution in which we specifically, have it right here, hold on a second. It was a possible council resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity, solidarity with the Black community and condemn racism. And so ultimately, we did not receive majority council support for that resolution. And the instruction that was given was to create a subcommittee, which was created to review the resolutions and resolutions similar to it. So I would recommend at this point that, I would actually love to work on this resolution, and I would love to work on the resolution that was brought up last July, in particular as we approached the one-year anniversary for George Boyd's death. And if the, if we have a majority of the council direct us to, I would actually love to work on it with Chair Salazar and our committee, and bring back those resolutions to the council for approval. It would be, it would be an honor.
Yeah, and, and my, my belief is, again, is, is my comment was back then, was to broaden it, and that's why they came up with the heart committee, you know, and so I think in the resolution, my thought was, you know, commitment to diversity, equality, and inclusion, obviously, to embody that, and I gave you kind of an example, but it's not just to specify, it is to broaden it as a, again, a council standing firm about what we did many years, a few years ago with the Standing Against Hate campaign and signs that we've established. So, anyway, other comments from council? Councilmember Salazar.
I, I would just say that, you know, I'm, I'm with Linda that I would like to see the council sort of give us the, the green light to move ahead with doing some of these things. We haven't met as a committee in a while, we're an ad hoc committee, so we don't have a regular case, but it would be good to get that direction and allow us to move forward on some of these initiatives.
Are you suggesting, then, that this not be brought back to council, but be brought back to the ad hoc on this particular inclusive resolution, or what do you, just to be specific? back to the ad hoc on this particular inclusive resolution or what do you, just to be specific? Council member Salazar.
Well, I wouldn't want to delay it, but I mean, I think we've, both Linda and I have brought up the, you know, our interest in getting the direction from the broader council, from the whole council to move forward with what we do on the committee. But if this is something that can be done quicker, if staff has something that they can do sooner, then, you know, I don't want to get in the way of that, but we do need some direction for our committee and how we're going to move forward with these other things. And perhaps we can revisit what wasn't done last year because we decided to form the committee.
Great point. I know.
So I'm asking for, I guess it's maybe two separate things, but as long as it came up, let's, I'd like to get some direction on that. And I know that we're under council member comments, so maybe asking for, you know, that level of direction is not appropriate at this point, but it is something I want us to come back.
Concur. We can put that on the agenda as far as what you just said. I would hate to delay it too, so my ask is that, or consideration is to have it so it can come back on the April 27th meeting. I think it's, it's something to try to reestablish, to take the committee together to talk about it and to do. I'd like to, this is, this is an important topic. I know hearing from the general counsel and hearing from the San Mateo API, and I think it's important for their representatives to know where we stand sooner than later. Council member Hamilton.
I would think if the, if the HART committee can get everyone together quickly, then this is right, this is, it seems like this is, this is the exact sort of thing why that committee was formed and we should, I don't think it's inappropriate to, for us to give that direction, given that the, what we're, what we would be asking the HART committee to do is exactly why they were formed. So it's not like it's out of the realm of normalcy to be asking them to do that. And I would, I would encourage the committee to get everybody together at their very earliest opportunity and get this done.
And of course, it's not out of the realm, and I know it was to examine the community and what we needed. I don't know if it was about passing resolutions, but certainly I think that's what you should formulate from the HART committee is, you know, what do we do for the next November of 2021 and in between that? Are there areas that need to be addressed in our community? And I think that's where we hope that the HART committee would, with its diversity and broad base, to kind of examine, have the hard asks and questions of our community and where we need to focus. Council member Mason.
Yeah, so in just in reviewing the meeting from last year, we were, that was, we never got that charge, but that was supposed to be one of the charges was to create the resolution to stand in solidarity with the Black community. And also in regards to this particular resolution, the reason I would, I guess push a little bit more is just because staff created a resolution to their, you know, to their, to, their credit and they've already come out with a statement. And so I think it would behoove us to create our own statement and work with the HART committee, which is a really nice diverse group of members of our community. I think it gives us an opportunity to work together, to listen to, we have a youth member that's on that committee, we have faith-based people in the community, we've got the schools on that committee. I would actually love to hear how they feel about what's happening right now in the community as far as the increase in hate crime against Asian Americans and how can we, how can we really place that in words in a resolution that truly is from the community? So to staff's credit, they've already created a statement, which I thought was great, but I do think it would be really nice to have the HART committee work on this with the community.
Okay. Yeah, and they adapted a statement, not a resolution, but that's fine with me. May I proper this is that if the group can't get together and all of a sudden, date selection is being challenged and now we're into May, that then we have a resolution that council can take action because we just don't know schedules. But is everybody okay with that? A, trying to have our committee see if they can get together and if they can within a reasonable time, then, you know, and they think the timeline they can do to address that and facilitate would be helpful. And if we have to move, when I don't say move in a negative way, but do that sooner due to conflict than we, scheduling, then we bring it back. Is that okay? I see a yes, a yes. Mr. Salazar, yes. Mr. Medina.
Yeah, I think we're kind of burgeoning away from council comments. I am in support of the concept. I was kind of along, I pretty much thought that that was the whole purpose of the HART committee, was to kind of do that piece too and work on many other pieces. So council comments, we're providing direction now? I don't know if that's what we're supposed to be doing, but.
Well, it's on the agenda so we can.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Okay. So you're good now?
I'm supportive of it.
Okay. So, okay. So, Mr. Salazar.
I would recommend a roll call vote for this to clarify.
I don't know that we need a roll call vote. I have a five zero in concurrence at a unified team that it will go to the HART committee with the understanding if it's scheduling conflict and we, if we're going to be late May or something like that, then we'll do a resolution. Do I have anyone that disagrees with what I just said?
No, I support that. And I think that if we don't endorse a vote, then we shouldn't be taking a vote. And so I think broad direction like this is adequate for the discussion. And thank you for supporting our interest in.
No.
Reactivating the committee.
This is what it's supposed to be about. This is why it was created. And I agree with council member Mason that it is a great group. And like I said, when you folks allowed me the opportunity to go out and talk to these folks and interview them and allowed me to do that, I'm so happy to hear from council member Mason and Salazar that it's a good group of folks that really represent our community well. For another comment, I did want to just point out that this week is National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, April 11th through the 17th, which a lot of us think about is 911 and our dispatchers. So I just wanted to acknowledge that it is this week because something that I found, and I'm just, it's not very long, it says 911 dispatchers are unsung heroes of public safety. They sit in a darkened room, looking at computers and talking to voices from faces they never see. They are expected to gather information from highly educated people who can't remember where they live, what their name is, or tell them what is going on, and then calmly provide all the information to responding units without error the first time and every time. They care about people and they enjoy being the lifeline of society, the steady voice in the storm, the one who knows how to handle every emergency situation and does it with grace and style. As a 911 dispatcher, their training, experience, compassion and composure are in preparation for the call. And they all know that it is not a question of if they will get the call, it is a question of when. And so I just want to acknowledge all the dispatchers, but I also want to acknowledge our, our police department and our dispatch team and all those folks that answer the phones and deal with those. And so I wanted that certainly to be acknowledged and I would safely say I'm sure all the council would be in concurrence that we want to thank them. And if you can think back some of the times that they've had from YouTube or the mall or the pipeline, be on that duty and on that shift and what they did. They are multitaskers with five screens before them and they are the first person that you hear when you're hitting 911. So I wanted that to be acknowledged. I'll come back as we adjourn at the end of the meeting. And Mr. Salazar, your mic is on? Did you, no, do you have nothing for council comments at this time? Mr. Hamilton. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, I'm Mayor Medina. The San Bruno baseball community suffered a heartbreaking loss this weekend. Darnell Earl, longtime Pee Wee manager of Artichoke Joe's baseball team, better known as the AJ's, unexpectedly passed away. I offer my sincerest gratitude for Coach Darnell's years of dedication to the numerous AJ's baseball teams. I was fortunate this year to assist Coach Darnell and his fabulous staff. I offer condolences to his family and our baseball community.
Thank you for that, thank you for bringing that up and thank you for those comments. Our condolences go out to the family and his team. Vice Mayor, was there anything else that you had this evening?
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, seeing nothing else from my colleagues, I think all you may be aware that Gene Mullen had passed away. And if you haven't met him, I'll tell you, he's one of the nicest men. Just, you know, he lived in South San Francisco. Gene Mullen, who served for many years in the state assembly representing San Mateo County, held various other leadership positions as a mayor, as a council member and teacher. He passed away at age 83 on Monday, April 5th of this year, after a three-year battle with cancer. His wife Terry, of 51 years of marriage, passed away in 2017 on the same day as April 5th. So Mullen represented the 19th district in the state assembly from '02 to '08, which followed a seven-year stint on the city council of South San Francisco where he twice served as mayor. A lifelong Bay Area resident, Mullen graduated from the University of San Francisco, settled into South San Francisco in 1967 when he began teaching at the South San Francisco High School for the next 32 years. He taught government and coached basketball, winning several public education awards that included the San Mateo County Teacher of the Year and the California Teachers Association State Teacher of the Year. And so, you know, in 1972, Mullen has served in many capacities in the city of South San Francisco and he has served us as well. And he leaves his son Kevin and daughter Jennifer. Our condolences are to their families. I have a card here that he sent to me in late November. He is a very kind man that I will miss seeing at the South San Francisco Conference Center annual corned beef and cabbage. And his kindness that he does do with cards like this are just the type of person and man that he is and will be remembered for. So with that, I would ask that we adjourn in this evening in memory and in honor of Gene Mullen for his service. May he rest in peace and may our hearts and prayers go through his family. With that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April 27, 2021, 7:00 PM via Zoom. I wish all of you a very good evening and enjoy the rest of your week. Please be healthy, please stay strong and please be safe. Everyone, have a good night.